I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty five at seven P M. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes the Anishinaabe whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over two hundred years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands is an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land in our community. Clerk Schmelzer, please take the role.
Commissioner Alzager?
Here.
Commissioner Perschabacher?
Here.
Commissioner Rowland?
Here.
Commissioner Skilitsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Yeah.
Mayor Wingard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This time we'll move into proclamations and presentations. First, we have an introduction and swearing in of Mount Pleasant full-time firefighter Eli Walker by Fire Chief Doug Lobzinker.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to swear in and introduce to you our newest full-time firefighter, Eli Walker. He comes to us from our paid-on-call staff. He's been with us about two years now, and he's made it to the full-time. So that's pretty impressive for an individual that's that young, but we're pretty impressed and we like what we see. So at this time, I'd like to swear amen. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Eli Walker.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
the laws of the state of Michigan.
The state of Michigan.
the ordinances of the city of Mount Pleasant. And I will faithfully discharge the duties
Faithfully discharge the duties.
of the office of firefighter
Of the office of firefighter.
according to the, according to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Welcome, boy. Thank you.
I want to thank you guys for this opportunity. The last two years have been awesome, and I can't wait to spend the next twenty-plus years with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll move into additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda that members of the commission would like to make? Not seeing any, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
A second.
Motioned by Commissioner Alzager, seconded by Vice Mayor Eke. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we'll move into public input on agenda items. If there's anyone in the public who would like to give comments on the items on the agenda, please step up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Are there any raised hands on Zoom? Are there any emails? Thank you. All right, not seeing anyone in the audience rushing up. I'm going to go ahead and close public input on agenda items, and we'll move into receipt of petitions and communications. Manager's sense if you would.
Yep, the receipt of petitions and communications includes the minutes of the traffic control
Yep. The receipt of petitions and communications includes the minutes of the traffic control committee regular meeting from June, letter from resident Doug LaBelle and opposition to the Immigration Trust Act, letter of resignation from Hannah Martin from the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the monthly report on police-related citizen complaints.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll move into consent items. Manager, just sense if you'd read off the consent agenda.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Consider awarding the twenty twenty six chemical bid contracts to the recommended companies listed. Consider contract with Reunion Health Services, Sirius Point America Insurance Company for twenty twenty six stop-loss coverage insurance, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you. Are there any items that the members of the commission would like to remove from the consent agenda and place into the regular agenda? Not seeing any. Is there any questions on the items?
I have a question, though, for not consent, but monthly police-related citizens complaint.
Uh.
May I ask?
Before we move too far away, if you want to make sure you're speaking to the microphone.
Yeah, sure. Director Lauria, there is one complaint there for October. Can you explain, please?
Um, this was a case where, um, there was a guardian of, an adult guardian that was taking care of the adult. The the adult wanted to send money over to uh, what she described as a significant other. We got a call from the bank. Uh, we went down and, and took the information and, um, made contact with, uh, the caretaker and the adult, and she was uh, quite upset that she couldn't do with uh, her money, what she wanted to do with it, and that was wired overseas. The bank thought that that was suspicious. That's why they called us. Um, and so we made contact with them a couple of different times. Uh, the money was delayed in getting there, and that frustrated the person, and they felt like they were being harassed and, um, by us for checking in on if it was safe for them to part with a substantial amount of money. And so we did our due diligence and the bank did their due diligence, and the money's wired and we're out of it.
Okay. So I just want to clarify, think, actually, first of all, thank you for this. And thank you for doing your due diligence and for, you know, taking care of that, because there are all sorts of international financial wire frauds these days. I just want to understand that the person who was wiring the money is the adult, is it the adult caregiver or the person who is being taken care of?
It is the, it, it's the person that needs care.
Okay, okay.
That, but the person that is taking care of her is the actual one that filled out the complaint form.
Okay.
So it, it's um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it's much clearer now. I, it wasn't very clear to me, because, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Um, with that, um, no que, without any additional questions and with no modifications, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Eke, seconded by Commissioner Rollins. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. All right, that brings us into our public hearings portion of the meeting this evening. We have several, uh, public hearings on the agenda. Um, the fir, we will start with number ten, public hearing to allow for public inputs on intent to renew the Central Business District, CBD Tax Increment Finance Authority, TIPA Plan. So CBD TIPA Plan is the catchphrase this evening. Manager, just sense if you would give us a bit of background on this before we proceed to the public hearing.
Absolutely. So this public hearing and the next public hearing this evening relate to the same item for consideration from the city commission. City commission is asked to hold a public hearing on the proposed CBD TIPA Plan amendment. The plan seeks to capture seventy-five percent of the taxes within the district to be used for downtown infrastructure and incentive programs. These programs include improving the downtown appearance through facade improvement, support for small businesses, fire suppression for public safety, and incentives to provide housing. The plan will provide funding for these programs for the next ten years. The city commission will be asked to take action on the next public hearing.
Okay. With that, I, are there any questions from members of the commission before we open up the public hearing? No. Um, with that, I'll open up the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time, please step up the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. State your name and address for the record. If you're using Zoom, please use the raised hand feature to indicate that you'd like to speak. Are there any emails that we have received at this time? Okay, are there any emails on Zoom, or, excuse me, are there any raised hands on Zoom? Okay, not seeing anyone in the audience rushing up to speak. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. All right, turning back to the members of the commission, again, any discussion, or is there a motion that would like to be made?
I think we make the motion after the next public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, thank you, yeah. Okay. Yep, so the motion would be made as, after public hearing, item eleven. We just had to hear them as separate. Could you clarify real quick for me why we're doing them as separate? I guess, I apologize.
We may be double-doing here, and it may not be necessary, but just in conversation with the city attorney, which is determined to cover all bases, uh, we would do it this way.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder there, manager, just sense. All right, with that, we're going to move into item number eleven, public hearing to allow for public inputs on ordinance to renew and amend the Mount Pleasant, Michigan Central Business District Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan, adopted on April fifteenth, nineteen eighty-five, as amended. Manager, just sense.
So the city commission is asked to hold a public hearing on an ordinance to consider the adoption of amendments to the CBD TIPA Plan via a proposed ordinance and resolution. These items adopt the proposed amendment to the TIPA Plan. After the public hearing, the city commission is asked to approve the proposed ordinance and resolution to adopt the plan.
Right. Same as before. Any questions from members of the commission?
Um, one question for myself on this. We had discussed, again, we're set, looking to set it at the seventy-five percent, um, capture rates, and I know TIPA is a unique entity because it's granting them authority to collect these taxes, and there's different levels of control that the commission at large has. We will ultimately have to approve a subsequent plan for the usage of those funds, or where it was like, we, are we setting full direction within these two, this item here for going forward and the usage of those funds?
Yeah, part of our process for annual budget is to adopt, uh, the component unit budgets, which includes the TIPA budgets. We do not have one for the current proposed twenty twenty-six budget until we know if there's going to be a capture or not. We can then amend the budget later in the year if we determine that we are going to be allowing the TIPA to capture, and then that budget can be adopted by the city commission. Also, the plan itself really puts guardrails onto what the TIPA can and cannot do, so it spells out their plan, what their funds are supposed to be used for. As we had discussed, it's all of the things that we, uh, discussed in work session between the incentive packages and the downtown, um, improvement, uh, infrastructure improvement project as well.
Gotcha. The, um, one question that had come up for myself after a conversation with several residents. Um, I think the investments are good, and it's like for the long-term future, but also ten-year period into the future. There's a lot of things that could happen that we're, that are uncertain of any time we think about economic change, um, affecting the city. Um, are we able to still determine the difference between, um, allowing for debt service versus building up funds for, um, you say, like saving up versus taking out the loan and just paying down the loan?
Right. Yeah, so the city commission in work session had discussed the interest in a pay-go system, which would be save up the funds and then pay for the infrastructure improvements in order for the component unit to take on debt. That would be a required process of its own. We would have to come before the city commission to talk about that. Um, I certainly wouldn't want to engage in that without the city commission's input, so as it stands right now, that is the process we're going to go with. I discussed this with the TIPA at their meeting, and they were agreeable to that.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions from members of the commission before I open up the public hearing?
I have a follow-up.
Yeah.
So what I'm hearing, just for myself, is that once we approve this and that the, um, allocation of the funds, whatever, you know, and approval of the allocation of the funds for projects would have to be brought up before the city commission?
As part of the budgetary process.
Okay. All right, I just want to clarify, though, because, you know, who knows? Ten years is a long time.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the city commission's clear. It's the exact same way that we have a relationship with Mission Pickard, uh, TIPA group, which is, again, they are free to spend within their budgetary means that they have on an annual basis, so they have incentive programs, and they're also saving up money for improvements to Mission Street into the future, so it'll work mu, work much the same.
Okay. All right. It's good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, opening up the public hearing. Um, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this topic, I mean, during the audience electronically, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom. Were there any emails on this separate public hearing? Any raised hands on Zoom? Okay. Once again, not seeing anyone rushing up to the podium. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Okay. And as Commissioner Alzager aptly pointed out, um, now would be the time on this topic to consider a motion from the commission.
I would like to say something in behalf of, uh, former Commissioner Zhang, uh, who has expressed himself, uh, quite clearly as far as where he stands on the TIPA. Um, and there is some, some concerns there. You know, it does take from certain, um, sources for, for the city, uh, particularly, uh, the school department. Um, there is a significant amount of funds that's taken over the last, over the next ten years. But I think with, um, the recent fire at the Painted Turtle and the uh, effects that that has had downtown, the business is down there. Um, and the types of plans that TIPA has for the next ten years with, uh, reinvesting in, in the structure and more or less maintaining what we already have. I think that it is very important that we implement this program so that that way we can make sure we take care of, uh, our downtown area, uh, and what draws business to Mount Pleasant.
Thank you, Commissioner Skolitsky. Other comments or discussion? Manager, just sense?
Just a moment of, or a, a item of clarification that I just want to make sure that you're aware of, Commissioner Skolitsky, that the, uh, there's a lot of opt-outs for taxing authorities to opt out of having their taxes collected. And so when it comes to the TIPA, what we're planning on is that the Central Business District TIPA will likely only capture the funds for the city and for the county. It's more likely that everyone else will end up opting out as a matter of this process. So I do not believe that the school is going to end up losing any funds with this, uh, TIPA in place. Mid-Michigan College is named in there, and that was only maybe a few thousand dollars worth of their capture. Uh, but that would be the only school of impact, to my knowledge, that could not opt out as part of the process.
Oh, I, I might have misread it when I was looking through the packet. Um, yeah, thank you for that update, and I believe that we do have an option to opt out of TIPA throughout that tenure.
So the TIPA rate is set in agreement between the TIPA board as well as the city commission, so that would be something that the city commission has a, uh, the ability to weigh in and in the future.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, manager, just sense. Yeah, that was, that was one of the concerns that, um, was coming to light for myself also. If you know, like, again, ten years is a very awfully long time, but, um, as we're setting the rates, we can like, i- it, depending on economic changes and whatnot in the area, what the city sees appropriate, and then also what the TIPA board is working on, we can adjust that rate as we need to, and that's where it was my, um, my concern over if we're performing debt service already, if we had that baked in, I couldn't remember. Um, if we had already taken out the loan, um, then you have to make your loan payments no matter what, so if that was based around a specific rate. But as long, currently, we're not entering into any debt services, a service we're going out with a pay-as-you-go, so that's what made me feel more comfortable with the plan also.
I, I also, I want to clarify that. I think part of why we're doing this has to do with the fact that this board hasn't been very active for quite some time, and people have come to us here at meetings requesting funding for which, you know, the money or funds from the board, you know, from TIPA could have, you know, been applied. And again, if I'm recollect, recollecting correctly, we did say that we needed to reactivate the, the board. Part of the problem was that its membership was not, you know, had not, um, you know, had sort of, uh,
Subcited?
Yeah, subsided. Thank you very, very much for the word. So I, you know, I, I, I mean, I do see, I, I only, I understand the concerns, you know, we are. I mean, as I said, ten years is a long time, but I do see the need to at least have a board that is active and that is, you know, uh, forward-looking in terms of what we have to do. We have need, and we need to address those needs, but since we are not the ones who are making, who have to serve on that board, we need to at least usher in a board that does the work that that entity is supposed to be doing. Otherwise, we're just going to be sitting down, and every year, somebody comes up here and says, we need money, and then we start scrambling. I don't like that. So it is important for us to activate this board, to make it, you know, do what it's supposed to be doing.
Other members of the commission who haven't had a chance to speak yet, Commissioner Alzager, any?
I'm ready to make the motion.
Gotcha. I'm looking around, not seeing anyone else interested in speaking, I'll take the motion.
All right, well, I move that we approve an ordinance to renew and amend the Central Business District Development Plan and Tax Increment Financing Plan as amended, and I believe it's written up as resolution number seventeen dash one.
I'll second it.
Okay. There was a motion made by Commissioner Alzager and seconded by Vice Mayor Eke to approve the, uh, the B, the resolution, and it is an ordinance amendment, so we would need a roll call vote, if I'm not mistaken. Gotcha. Yep, so we proceed with the.
Commissioner Skolitsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Alzager?
Yes.
Commissioner Pershawbacher?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Yes.
Mayor Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to item number twelve on our agenda this evening, public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-six annual operating budget. Manager, just sense if you would.
The city commission is required to hold a public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-six operating budget. The proposed budget will expend forty-six point three million dollars across all funds. The proposed budget will utilize one point seven million dollars of unassigned fund balance, leaving the general fund with five point five million dollars in unassigned fund balance, representing twenty-five percent of annual expenditures in that fund. I'll note that is, uh, one of the best practices when you go to trainings with the Michigan Government Finance Officers Association, uh, Government Finance Officers Association National, is that twenty-five percent is seen as a best practice of what you want to have in terms of fund balance for your general fund. No action is being requested of the city commission at this time. At our meeting on November twenty-fourth, the city commission will be asked to consider adopting the proposed budget at that time.
Any questions from members of the commission before public hearing is opened? Not seeing any? At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. If you're on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature to indicate you'd like to speak. Um, if you're in the audience, please step up the microphone. Are there any emails that we've received? Any raised hands? No one in the audience want to comment? Couple in the back? Couple in the back and everything there? No, okay. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty six annual operating budget. Again, as manager dissents stated, there's no action needed at this time. So for those watching at home, remember November twenty fourth is when we will be making our final um approval of the budget. Um, make sure to get information to us before then. That brings us into new business. Um, we can move on to item number thirteen. Consider project agreement for the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, MDNR trust fund grant for fiscal year twenty twenty five budget in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars to support North Pathway Project and adopt resolution on the same. Manager dissents, if you want to.
Uh, so I do just want to say hats off to Director Biscorner and his group for securing this grant. You know, it's not often we get to give praise for certain things. So he is here this evening to answer if there's any particular questions on this. But uh, just to tee this up, the city has been awarded uh a Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant for four hundred thousand dollars to support the North Pathway Project. This project will take place in summer of twenty twenty six. It's for the North Pathway Connector between Nelson Park and Mission Creek Woodland Park. The MDNR requests that the city commission adopt the attached resolution and project agreement to receive the funding.
Right. Any questions or comments, discussion from members of the commission? Commissioner Al Sager?
I just had one question. One of the things that I read in this was something about funding with the city of Mount Pleasant and with Union Township. And I thought we were just going to the edge of our property.
We are, we are going through to the ed, we're going into our property. So we're going up into uh Mission Creek. But that section between the coin business property and our property is Union Township.
Oh.
And so they're paying a portion of the project.
Thank you.
Nice. Any other questions for Director Biscorner? Do we want to keep having him come back up and down this evening? Thank you, Director Biscorner, and congratulations on the, on the hard work here. Thank you, um, this is a really amazing opportunity.
Yeah, congratulations.
All right. With that, um, is there a motion from the commission at this time?
Please move in. I need the language, so I don't want to move.
Like, make a motion to uh accept the resolution to, for us to be able to receive the grant.
I'll second.
Okay, so it was a motion made by Commissioner Skolitsky and seconded by Vice Mayor Eke to approve the attached resolution um for the receipt of the grant funds from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to now to item number fourteen. Housing Commission request for the renewal of the Municipal Services Agreement, MSA. Manager dissents, if you would.
Hmm, so on October fourteenth, the Mount Pleasant Housing Commission Director Vanessa Haste provided a letter to the city commission requesting that the current municipal services agreement applying to fourteen fourteen West Broomfield be kept in place. This property is owned by the housing commission, includes twelve units that supply housing to individuals with a rent late, with a rental rate below market value. The current municipal services agreement charges a three percent rate based on annual shelter rents, which provides the city with two thousand six hundred ninety seven dollars and ninety eight cents in twenty twenty five. This rate expires at the end of the year, at which time a ten percent payment in lieu of taxes rate of ten percent would be provided. This would then provide eight thousand nine hundred ninety three dollars, twenty eight cents to be shared among all taxing jurisdictions. The city would receive nearly two thousand dollars of this payment. In an email exchange with Director Haste, it was clarified that the city commission is being asked to consider extending the MSA another five years at the three percent rate. If the city commission is interested, staff will work with the city attorney to accommodate this request. If no action is taken, then the ten percent rate will be in effect with payment due in July twenty twenty six.
Okay. Discussion or questions from members of the commission?
I was just ready to make the motion.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor Eke?
So I, I'm, I'm asking for clarity. I think I understand this, but I want to make sure that, you know, I understand what is in here. The current rate is three percent and the request is to continue that three percent.
That's correct, to continue that for another five years.
Okay, for another five years. And if that, if we decide not to continue that, then the new rate would be at ten percent, but we would have to share whatever is received with other entities.
That's correct.
Okay, at three percent, it is just the city?
That is correct.
Okay, that's the clarity that I want, that I'm seeking, thank you.
Other questions or discussion at this time?
Uh, I think that anything that we can do to support the housing commission, uh, we should with the current crisis that we have in Mount Pleasant, so.
Agree.
With that, I'm going to turn over to Commissioner Al Sager. I believe you had a motion that you wanted to make.
Sure, I move that we uh renew the municipal services agreement with the housing commission.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Al Sager, um, seconded by Vice Mayor Eke. All those in favor of renewing the agreement, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay. All right, that brings us the end of new business. We are going to move into announcements on city related issues and new business. At this time, if members of the commission have anything they'd like to bring to the attention of the commission or the community, please use this time, starting with Commissioner Al Sager.
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. See, Vice Mayor Eke?
Um. It's. Okay, it's, it's just a request in terms of driving in the city. Um, a number of colleagues who teach at CMU have reported several times that um people driving on University and Main do not maintain speed limit. There is a lot of speeding and, you know, there are kids there, people's pets, you know? So I am concerned about that. I have brought that up already to uh with the uh city manager. But I do think that it is important for residents to, you know, pay attention to the fact that people actually live on the, on those streets. The other one has to do with the right turn um on Watson, at the intersection of Watson and High, that light there. There are two signs there that say no turn on red. And I have stood and watched people turn on red, yeah, at those signs, okay? So, you know, students walk along that path. And I think it's important for, you know, for people to at least comply with just simple, you know, traffic uh regulations, because we're talking about the lives of people, you know? And there is heavy traffic, you turn on red and there's a truck coming and what happens? So, um, you know, I don't know how to say this, but we need to be mindful, you know, of the fact that we share the road or roads and streets with other people and with other vehicles. That's all I'm saying.
Right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Make sure, Perschbacher?
Um, I just want to remind people that we're still doing the leaf cleanup. Um, rake your leaves into the street. Try not to clog up any of the drains or raking your leaves on the drains. And um drivers, when you're going down the streets, I know sometimes it narrows the street quite a bit, especially if you have uh uh homes that have large trees in their yards. So please be careful, don't run through the leaves. There's always that danger of something being in the leaves or some one or some animal being in the leaves. So let's just um rake our leaves and the city will clean them up and we can get on with this wonderful cold weather.
Thank you, Commissioner Perschbacher. Commissioner Rollins?
Well, for once, I do have something. Um, today is the two hundred and fiftieth birthday of the United States Marine Corps. And as a fellow Marine veteran, I would like to wish all of my fellow veterans happy birthday. Also tomorrow's Veterans Day, so.
Yeah.
Happy Veterans Day also. And coincidentally, forty two years ago this month, I earned the title of United States Marines, so. It's a, it's a good time for all.
Gotcha. Thank you, Commissioner Rollins, and thank you for your service. Commissioner Skolitsky?
Um, yes, thank you for the acknowledgement and thank you for your service. Um, I would like to wish everybody uh be safe out there this weekend with um opening season coming up. Um, you know, be mindful where your high vis. Um, and just be safe out there uh in your pursuit of the big one, uh that fifty point buck. Um, also, uh, this Saturday, the Broadway Theater will be hosting a concert. Uh, The Boy Detective is launching Disco Lunch and it's, it's going to be a good time. Uh, there's been a lot of effort put into the sound system and revamping the Broadway Theater. We just recently won a grant and uh should be a good time.
Thank you, Commissioner Skolitsky. Okay, for myself, yes, I wanted to comment that tomorrow's Veterans Day. So thank you to all the veterans out there. And thank you, Commissioner Rollins, for your service to this country. Um, let's see, coming off of just our earlier discussion on the report um that from the Public Safety Department, um, it just triggered in my mind. Um, as a fin- a financial services professional, just reminding people that there are multitude of scams out there. If someone's ever trying to hassle you, if someone's trying to make you uh feel afraid that you need to act now or all your money will be gone, to take a moment, slow down and contact your financial institution through a trusted channel. Um, your money generally is going to be safe, um, communicating with your financial institution versus the cold call you may receive or if an individual is trying to pressure you into acting without thinking. So always just take a moment, think through your actions. Um, it's really easy to get caught up in a scam of any kind, especially when they're focused in on you. Thank you for my soapbox there. And then the last thing, I just wanted to congratulate um Mount Pleasant High School Football Team, the Oilers, on their recent victory over the Gaylord team. Um, I believe that makes them district, I believed, I'm getting nods. Thank you, district champions, for the first time, I believe I read in ten years. Um, so it's a really great achievement for, for that team and for that program. So congratulations to the Oilers. That's all I had at this time. Let's see. That's going to bring us into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Um, once again, if you are in the public and would like to comment on any item, whatever topic you might be interested in, please step into the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Um, if you're on Zoom, please use the raised hand function to indicate you'd like to speak. Are there any emails? Are there any raised hands? Gotcha, not seeing anyone in the audience, so I am going to go ahead and close public uh comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Um, commissioners, at this, we have a work session and a closed session still on the agenda. Um, it's seven thirty eight, we're making pretty good time. Um, but would any members of the commission like a recess at this time?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes at this time? Okay, um, in that case, seven thirty eight right now, we'll have a ten minute recess and we'll resume at uh seven fifty. Yeah. Hey, it is seven fifty and we are back in session at this time. We have one work session on the agenda, and it is a work session on Immigration Trust Act. Manager Descents, if you want to tee us up?
Absolutely. Public Safety Director Paul Loria has provided the information requested from the City Commission regarding the Immigration Trust Act. In your City Commission packet, you will find two memorandums on the issue, copy of the New Jersey Immigration Trust Act, copies of the Michigan House bills, uh, that are being considered and are referred to in the director's memo, and the current Mount Pleasant Police Department policy related to immigration violations.
So, talking about this issue, I know Commissioner, it was, uh, back in September when the, when this was first brought up, I believe, our last meeting in September, um, if my memory serves me correctly. Um, Commissioner Sklitsky had brought up interest in this topic, and I know several other Commissioners had communicated with me, um, with concerns about, um, wanting to have discussion on our, on cities' policies regarding interaction with the immigrant community that might be in Mount Pleasant, that is within Mount Pleasant. Um, and so it was something we're getting that on the agenda because there was at least a small, uh, m- minority of the members who wanted to have that conversation. Um, talking about this, um, this is an issue that is relevant to the city of Mount Pleasant. Um, the topic, it is topical right now, um, as Mount, as, um, Director Loria lays out in his memos and his discussion of this to us. Um, federal policy plays a role in local policing, um, and it has impacts on the city. Um, there are communities within the city that are impacted by federal policy. Um, and the city creates our own local public safety policies, um, in response to all of that in, as well. So it is something that is important for us to have conversation on. And I know myself, um, as I've been out in the community, that there's a number of residents who have approached me with concerns about this. Um, not our particular policy, but that this is a subject matter that people are worried about. Um, people are seeing national news and are concerned about how increased, um, policing and increased, um, action against, um, local immigrant communities, um, is playing out. Um, yeah, people genuinely have concerns. And so our conversation here tonight, um, is just discussing that a- as something that's going on in a community, as I know other members of the Commission share those concerns. Um, and so it's just talking about what does our policy look like? Educating ourselves, whether or not we take action, um, is for us to decide still. We discuss men- a multitude of different actions, um, throughout this Commission's time, past Commissions, many different things come before us for consideration. Um, and this is another one. Um, so again, it's educating ourselves as Commissioners. Um, our conversation helps inform staff on where we're standing, and it helps educate the community also on what our policies are. So turning back to the, uh, rest of the Commission, questions or items of discussion? Um, any other Commissioner who would like to speak on this topic at this time?
I would feel remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to start us off, since I was the one that, uh, that pushed us all forward. Um, the current atmosphere nationally is, uh, very concerning. Um, a lot of the actions taking place, and I would feel derelict in my duty if I did not present every option possible for addressing some of the concerns. Uh, I know earlier this year, um, I spoke with somebody from, uh, CMU. Uh, it was around the time that student visas were suspended, uh, surprisingly, um, that the immigrant, um, student body there on campus, uh, did not want, uh, advocates for them because of their concern of possible repercussions and unnecessary attention drawn to them. So I mean, th- there is fear and there is concern from residents of Mount Pleasant. And that is the reason why I wanted to bring this up. I feel like New Jersey's Act, uh, particularly, if you look at the language within the, um, the policy, most of it states how how many immigrants live in New Jersey and the need for, uh, to address it. Uh, I feel within Mount Pleasant, with, um, the immigrant student body, not just at CMU, but also at Mid-Michigan, um, there are people that have concerns within our community, and that is why we needed to address it. Um, looking at our current policy, there's, there's a lot of favorable things within there. Um, even, even the request for federal, uh, assistance, you know, even just making a modification of that to say, like, if they, if they had a warrant. You know, tho- these are the types of rights that are being infringed upon and the, the type of power that we have as a City Commission to take action immediately to ensure a sense of safety for our residents.
Commissioner Al Sager, I think I saw a raised hand?
Yeah, um, reading what, um, Director Loria has put forward for us, some information, and, um, his recommendation that really what we have is a, a police force that only, that is not only active in Mount Pleasant, but kind of, I guess the terminology is cross-deputized, you know, with the tribal police. And I think that they have a good working relationship, so I'm, I'm in favor of using Director Loria's recommendation and not taking action.
Thank you, Commissioner Al Sager. Other members of the Commission who'd like to talk, speak at this time? Vice Mayor, okay, if you'd like to speak?
I'm looking at this, not within the context of any political or party affiliation, but in terms of a human rights, you know, concern or human rights issue. And I understand my colleagues' concern, and I understand the need to make sure that the rights and dignity of everyone who lives in this community are protected and secured. Um, what complicates this for me right now, and I'm, I'm, I'm not, you know, what complicates it for me right now has to do with the working relationship with the tribe, and I'm gonna ask Director Loria directly, you know, sort of. You recommend no action, so let's say hypothetically, I, 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 I need clarity in terms of how developing an immigrant act or policy or maybe modifying it, and I'm not saying we do anything, I'm just simply, I need clarity, okay? Um, might affect the relationship between the city, the city's law enforcement and the tribal law enforcement, or even the counties.
All right, what, can we take this from a, an approach of leaving the, the tribe out of it and talk to, talk about it from the approach of our federal deputization?
Okay.
Um, because I'm, I'm not gonna speak for the tribe, um, on this matter, as it pertains to them. I can tell you, um, that from a federal deputization standpoint, um, our, our BIA, uh, deputization that, uh, we have, that is applicable to essentially half of, uh, the city north of High Street, that allows us to enforce, uh, laws against, um, uh, non-natives and natives on the reservation, um, requires us to be federally deputized. Now, if you want us to pick and choose what laws we do enforce based on that federal deputization, then I think we have to have a bigger discussion about, um, whether or not we're gonna stay federally deputized. Uh, because that's a very slippery slope. Um, right now, to the best of my abil- or to the best of my knowledge, uh, tribal police, uh, doesn't have, and the tribe does, has not, um, taken up anything pertaining to, uh, limiting their authority uh, on, on tribal, uh, or on reservation, uh, land. Uh, so if we're going to be enforcing the laws differently, that in itself could be problematic. Um, again, we are very unique in the fact that w- we have a federal, recognized federal Indian reservation. Um, there were legal avenues taken. These weren't done by, um, police officers to get more authority. This was done by the City Commission at the time, the tribal, um, council at the time, and they came out with agreements, and part of that agreement was to be federally deputized. So if you guys want to go back on those agreements or, or look at those to amend those, I would say that's something we gotta get Mike Comier involved with, to see whether or not it impacts, how it impacts. Um, but it's, it is, um, it's complicated. I, I wanna talk a little bit. We, we use, I heard nationally, out of all of, or out of you threes, let's talk locally, okay? I, I, I understand nationally, but I can't solve national problems here in Mount Pleasant. I can address them, but I can't solve them. So if we're doing this because at the national level, I, we, 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 we have a lot more to discuss because there's bigger problems, uh, or there's, there's equally as big problems nationally that I would like to solve locally under that thinking. That, uh, tha- that to me, um, doesn't make a whole lot, it, it logically, it doesn't make sense to me. And then in my twenty-eight years here, do you know how many expired visas the Mount Pleasant Police Department has documented for students? Zero. Zero. So I've heard this Commission say over and over again that you guys are data-driven. The data doesn't support it, because we don't police this. This isn't for us to police. That's why I've taken the stance on it. It's not an uncomfortable stance for me to take, and the data just doesn't support it. We had a complaint last week about people not speaking English. They wanted, they wanted the people checked on. Did we go? Did we go and do that? No. No, we didn't. So, I, again, I, there's, there's a number of, the deputization thing's gonna have to be flushed out if we want to proceed, without a doubt. Um, but I think that if we, if, if we looked at this very, um, what we have in place now, what the, the expectations that have been set by this board, um, and not to mention the city manager, um, I think we got everything we need in place.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, um, Director Loria, I wanna say, first of all, thanks for your comments. I, you know, I empathize, I understand that this is a complicated issue. As I began, I said, for me, this was an issue that has to do with human rights and human dignity. I'm not talking about nationally, I'm just simply talking about people. Um, I appreciate the comments about, you know, the visas, you know, the student visas. You have addressed part of my concern, which is that I have no sense of what the immigrant population data or, you know. What the immigrant population data or, you know. Figures are for Mount Pleasant and you're saying to me, okay, not much. I also, part of my conundrum right now has to do. With the comparison to New Jersey. We're not like New Jersey. And you have mentioned the fact that, yeah, we're unique and it is that uniqueness that made me ask you the question I asked you. Which is, you know, this intersection between, you know, the city's responsibility. The federal and then the tribal. So, you know, it's, I'm trying to figure out how this would even work. Within that particular context. And right now, I'm not even suggesting that we do anything about it because. It, for me, it's a complicated issue. There are a number of things that need to be unraveled and we're just discussing. I don't believe that I'm ready to make any decision about either way, you know, either the directions to go here. Because I need more information to either make up my mind or feel, know what's happening. But we're just discussing. I do think that it is important to talk about it, you know, so. I, I think that because of the complexity of the issue, it's something that, you know, that we probably should. Take time to look at. You, I, I, I hear your concern. I don't think that this is a decision that I, at least me, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners. That I wanna go into hastily, bearing in mind the implications, not only for the city, but also in terms of. The working relationship between, you know, public safety and all these other entities. And the fact that we actually don't have a clear roadmap here, you know, you know, we need to work out a number of things. So I am hesitant about this. It's not that I don't care about it, but I am hesitant because. I don't have the information that I need. I'm not happy or at least not completely satisfied with the information that I have. To make, you know, a clear decision on this.
Has anyone, um, I did have a brief discussion with um. Central Michigan University Police Chief Cameron Wosman. And asking him, you know, what their policy is and, and he's directed me to their website. Um, I don't know if any of you have seen it. I can certainly pass the link on, um, but there's a lot there. Um, so, uh, that is.
I think the resource would be appreciated, Director Loria. So I think if you pass that on, that would be something that every member of the commission would be interested in. Um, more information for us is always helpful. And, you know, starting this process, um. This, part of a work session is determining what is the interest of the commission. That, that is part of a work session. Part of a work session is to discussing if there is interest in taking action. Or setting a direction, what would that look like? So if we did express serious interests, it's finding out from educated staff and experienced staff. What direction would we go in? What community partner would we talk with? Um, their recommendations as far as like seeking legal advice or opinions. Um, are there things that we're overlooking, um, because we haven't had the same tenure as other members of staff? So a lot can be accomplished in a work session and I think it's a perfect place to have a conversation that either starts or. If, if so, so desired, um, could settle, settle an issue. We talk a lot about issues that happen at the national level. In two thousand eight, nationally, the economy crashed. And that had a direct impact on the city of Mount Pleasant, our pension funds, our ability to take action. Um, in two thousand twenty, there was a national issue where the COVID pandemic shut everything down. Um, and most of us couldn't meet in person for an extended period of time and many people lost their lives during that pandemic. Um, but these are issues that are national issues that play out at the local level here in our streets. In our homes every day. Um, and same thing with, you know, nationally, we're seeing heightened focus. On immigrant communities and they're feeling a lot of pressure right now. And Mount Pleasant is a home to many different members of the immigrant community. And so there are people who are genuinely concerned and have valid concerns. And people who may follow along with the city commission and ask, well, why aren't you talking about this? Or what is the, the city's policy? Are my member, elected officials concerned about this or discussing this thoroughly? And having a discussion like this allows us to say, yes, we are, we are taking this seriously and this is something we're aware of. And, you know, we can now speak more educatedly on what our policies are. With the work that Director Loria has done, I think he has given us a much firmer grasp on this topic. And if we each individually had to come to him one by one and say, Director Loria, could you please go through all this with me? And, and explain it piece by piece by having that conversation here as a group, it makes it a lot easier. So again, talking about the purpose of work sessions, it is to educate, not just ourselves, but members of the community who would be following along as well. I myself am fairly comfortable with the policies that uh have been developed over the past. Eight, nine years now by the city of Mount Pleasant in regards to how public safety interacts with um. The immigrant communities in the area. It takes into account especially our commitments to other um law enforcement agents and other communities within the area. Um, I fully understand the interest in the New Jersey Immigrant Trust Act, um, reviewing it. Um, it shares a lot of, you know, values that I see here in Mount Pleasant. It talks about um. The positive, um, positive aspects of having a uh more diverse um community. Talks about, um, you know, the need for local resources to be focused on local public safety, which I appreciate. Um, my biggest concern about implementing is looking at this, is it blankets. It's a top-down approach versus a bottom-up approach. And given our, the constraints that we have, working with other law enforcement agencies and. Working with state agencies and working with federal agencies. Um, it's difficult for us to navigate, um, but I do know that Director Loria, um, manager of sense. Um, and working in conjunction with other members of um the local community leaders. Um, have created a fairly balanced policy. Um, in my opinion, that does take into account the desire to make sure that local. Resources are being spent on local safety priorities, um, which I appreciate. But it also takes into account the road we have to navigate working with other agencies. Other members of the commission who'd like to speak at this time, other discussion items, other questions for staff? Yeah, Commissioner Skolitsky.
Uh, I, I greatly appreciate that perspective, um, Mayor Wingard. And your insight and experience, Director Loria, on everything that has transpired to make us federally um deputized. And how we coordinate with the other law enforcement agencies here in town. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we modify that agreement so that that way we cannot coordinate. Because I feel like it helps all the agencies be more efficient in their duties that they have to perform to make sure that we're safe. What I was looking for was for us to align, because there is a sense of fear within our community with the national things that are taking place. Um, and they do affect us here locally. Um, I'm glad that no student visas, visas have been picked up or anybody detained or anything along those lines because of them. But it is actions that are being taken that do affect and instill a sense of concern within our community. That call that you received last week is a prime example of why I wanted to address this type of issue. Um, there is parts within that, um, that policy. That more or less privatize immigration status, which if somebody is making a phone call saying, hey, I don't understand the language that they're speaking. Will you go check them out? And come to find out something did happen, it might provide a legal means for them to. Come back home if they were detained by ICE or deported or anything along those lines. Um. Like uh Mayor Wingard mentioned, you know, a, a big part of that, um. That policy is make sure, making sure that local resources stay for local concerns and local. Uh municipalities. Um, but I feel like. Mount Pleasant has an opportunity to be a leader in making sure that we are saying that we are proud to look out for our neighbors. No matter what their, uh, their race, religion, or country of origin. Um, and I, putting that down and in paper. Um, I feel would give a lot of members within our community a sense of security. Knowing that we have their back, that it is down on paper, that. Um, you know, I was there at the, the Universal Unitarian Church when you, when you spoke to everybody and members of the community. Uh, about the police policies and uh the direction that you have for, uh, for Mount Pleasant Police Department. And I appreciate the words and your willingness to speak to the community on that behalf. Um, but words are different than legislation, so, um. While you are the director for Mount Pleasant right now, something, knock on wood, nothing does happen. We do have somebody with integrity, you know, looking out for its citizens, but that might not be true next year. You know, and by making sure that we are taking action today, uh ensures that there is uh. Security in the future. And, and that is my two cents.
One moment. Members of the commission who haven't had a chance to speak yet? Vice Mayor.
The, um, the Rachel Loria, I, I seem to recall that, um, at a certain point. You were working with the Isabella County Human Rights Committee to look at some of these policies. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They, they're always involved.
Okay.
With um these types of policies.
Okay.
I mean, I would, I wouldn't necessarily bring like a emergency vehicle operation policy to them. Um, but no, there, this, this policy actually now has input from uh three different groups.
Yeah.
So.
That's the, that's why I asked, because I, I recall that you were working with a number of groups to, you know, to um develop this, at least update it. Um, you know, um, as I said, I, I think we have a policy, at least mechanism that's working. And there are also other mechanisms like the Human Rights Committee and other entities that. We can, you know, collaborate with. Um. I, I am not, you know, I am not um insensitive to the. The issues that you're talking about, because I deal with the concern, I deal with the concern that you're talking about, okay? Yeah, I understand that. I am very empathetic. I'm also thinking in terms of. You know, the implementation of something that looks like New Jersey's. New Jersey's has to do with a state and we're looking at a small community with also very limited resources. That is also in a very complex situation of working with multiple, you know, jurisdictions. And that, and that's playing in my head right now. How do we do this in such a way that people are not then caught? In the spaces between all these amongst these jurisdictions, suddenly they're trapped. Suddenly that becomes another problem by itself. So perhaps, you know, at this moment, let's, you know, let's. I'm gonna stay, say, you know, I, I can't make a decision about this. I'm deferring to Director Loria. That's where I am right now, because we've seen some of this, you know, through the Human Rights Committee and other entities.
The, the, the commission realizes that. We have no control over ICE. They roll into town.
That's.
You can make it whatever policy and ordinance you want. So you, you, I, right now, they notify us if they're coming in. Uh, when, you know, they would already be here. Um, that would stop. And I get it. That's, that's their prerogative. Um, I'd much rather know that they're here and um then. Not know that they're here and. Not be able to um. Adequately, uh, make sure that things are done correctly, humanely. Uh, as much as possible, so.
How many immigration cases, issues have you had recently dealing with ICE? Do you have a sense?
Um, I, I, in the last. They notified us, they were in town, um. Maybe two times over the last, what, several months, whatever it is, once or twice. And, and that, that was, um, um, yeah, but we didn't do anything with it.
Other members of the commission at this time, um, I think we've had brought forward a lot of di- different discussion points. Um, I don't think, I, I think the most consensus for direction um sounds to be. Um, to maintain our current policies, um, but. That's the large, uh, large group that I'm picking up on as far as we're having this discussion. Um, I would like to say, just as a final comment on this, if I may. Um, our slogan, our city slogan is meet here. Um, we wanna make sure that. Mount Pleasant is a safe and welcoming community to people from all over. Um, and I think we have policies that directly help improve safety. And I think we have a public safety department that works with our community, um, and does their utmost to maintain that. Um, sense of safety within our community. So as we move forward, as um there's new developments in the future, um, I'm sure this is a conversation we can. Um, come back to as, as needed and as there's interest from members of the commission. But um at this time. I am going to go ahead and close the work session. Let's see, it is eight twenty-two. Last item on the agenda for this evening is going to be consider a closed session pursuant to subsection A of the. Opens Meeting Act, Consider Personnel Evaluation. Um, I'd be seeking a motion to go into closed session, um, from a member of the commission.
I move we go into closed session.
Our second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Al Sager and seconded by Vice Mayor Eke to go into closed session. Um, to consider a personnel evaluation. We'll need a roll call vote as we're going into closed session. Clerk Schmelzer, when you're ready.
No, we need to clear the room first.
Uh, we'll vote and then we'll clear the room, yeah.
Commissioner Pershawbacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Skolitsky?
Yes.
Commissioner Al Sager?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Yes.
Mayor Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we're going to be going to closed session now. Um, I'd ask that we have the room cleared. Any um members of the public or staff who are not part of this discussion, please take your leave at this time. We'll be back. We're gonna start, let's start here in about five minutes, so if you need to walk around.